Board of Commissioners meeting on Tuesday, March tenth, two thousand and fifteen. Would like to welcome each of you who have come to share in our proceedings. And we ask that you continue to bear with us as we make right decisions and best decisions for our great county. At this time, I ask an all to please stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. The invocation will be led this morning by the Reverend Dan Phillips of Grace Fellowship, Palatka, and our former chair, Commissioner Labo, will lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Our Father, we come before your presence this morning knowing that it is good and it is pleasant when your people are in unity. And Father, we stand before you in unity, knowing that you have placed before us the great responsibility of being good stewards of all that you have created and placed before us. Father, for these that sit in positions of leadership and authority and respect. Father, we ask that you guide them and you open their heart and their minds and help them, Father, with clarity of thought and dedication to you and dedication to this county to be the very best leaders they can. Father, for each and every one that has come before this group this morning with a burden, with a problem, with a situation in their heart to bring before this council, this commission. Father, again, it is good and it is pleasant when your people dwell in unity. May we again be good stewards of all that you have entrusted into our care. And Father, we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Reverend Phillips, thank you again so much for coming and sharing with us the invocation. Commissioners, each of you should have received the minutes from February twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen, our regular proceedings. What is your pleasure?
With approval, Mr. Chair.
Proper motion and a second further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. This morning, our property appraiser, the Honorable Tim Parker, is here for an employee recognition. Please come forward and bring that dynamic employee with you.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to recognize Justin Edwards for completing ten years of dedicated service to our office. Justin wears many hats in our office. Not only is he our liaison between the information technology department, he handles those tasks within our office as well. He's also in charge of our tangible personal property role. Justin is an excellent example of someone who was raised in Palatka, a nineteen ninety-five graduate of Palatka High School, went off to college and returned to be a part of our community. Justin's involved in our community with the Masons and also the Kiwanis Club of the Azalea City, serving our citizens even after normal work hours. Please join me in congratulating Justin on ten years of service to the citizens of Putnam County. Our certificate of appreciation reads, "We hereby express our sincere appreciation to Michael J. Edwards for outstanding service and contribution to the citizens of Putnam County for ten years."
When you do your job efficiently under the leadership of Mr. Parker, it reflects on this entire county. We have watched you in action, how you work with our citizens and how you work with your colleagues, and it is very commendable. And thank you so much on behalf of the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our Health Department Administrator, Mrs. Mary Garcia, is here to share some good news. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm very happy to be here today. Oh, I'm shorter than there. And excited that Putnam County has been selected among the sixty-five communities that were recognized this year by the Surgeon General, Dr. John Armstrong, for our Healthiest Way Program. We recognize that government has efforts that raise awareness about health and active lifestyle in our communities, and your support of these policies and roles are important to our community, so we appreciate that. I want to mention that this is the second year that Putnam County has received this recognition. And this year, our submission, in cooperation with our Parks and Recreation Department, highlighted the Bartram Trail. And the project's mission was to document and recreate the Bartram Travels in Putnam County from world-famous naturalist William Bartram, who traveled through East Palatka in seventeen sixty-five and seventeen seventy-four. The launch was at the beginning of two thousand and fourteen, so we felt it was perfect for this application. And we really thank Putnam County for efforts to promote health and support the Florida Department of Health in Putnam County. So I have a recognition. Yeah, come on. I'll take all of you. Hey, I'm proud. This is a wonderful thing. Beautiful. Yeah.
Yep. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership, helping our community to be more alert and aware of what we ought to be doing right, that our health is enhanced and increased each year.
Thank you.
Thank you again so much.
Trails part of it.
We're so excited about that, so we have to figure out what we're going to do about next year. I'm going to leave this box over here.
All righty. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And please pass on to the Health Department staff how pleased we are that you have such a cohesive unit that does work for the betterment of our community. As we know, without your leadership and all of those who every day is concerned and focused in on health, that these things will not come to pass.
A little plug in if you don't mind.
Okay.
The youth survey came back for substance abuse, and I'm happy to report that for Putnam County since two thousand and six, our numbers have been dropping in tobacco usage. And that is in great part through the leadership of our SWAT efforts in our schools and our youth leadership. I know they've presented to you in the past, and hopefully we'll bring them by again. But we're very pleased. Those won't show up on any rankings until further in the future because the numbers that they're using for the ones coming out this year are based on two thousand and ten, two thousand and twelve data. So this is nice new data that will be very complimentary to us going forward. Thank you.
Read some of the articles, and you certainly have some dynamic student leaders that are always enthusiastic about the overall project, and they really lead and they make Putnam County shine. I think throughout the state, we've had actually some of the leaders who have been statewide leaders, and that is commendable.
We've been very fortunate, and our past statewide leader is now up in Tallahassee, also leading while he's in college. And on our youth advisory board, Abria Campbell from Putnam County is also a member this year. So we're very fortunate to have Putnam very represented from this group.
I just wanted to add, the billboard or advertising campaign is getting very clever. They're targeting it to the high school-age students, and they have a pile of, the one I saw were snuff cans, and it equated to nine hundred and eighty dollars, and then it had a picture of four brand-new four-wheeler tires. And said, "You can have this if you go up there." Very clever. Then, as I went to Tallahassee last week, I saw two or three of them, and they all were money-oriented and things that a teenager could relate to. And it was very clever, whoever's doing that. And how is Kareem Golden, our past brother?
He's doing absolutely wonderful. He's working with the governor. Governor's Office also representing the youth advisories at the college level. So we're really excited for him and South Putnam, who we represent, so we're really excited.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the update. Item five on this morning's agenda is public comment. We ask all of our citizens to feel free to bring matters to our attention. However, the Board will not engage in debate or deliberations on issues that we don't have prior information shared with us. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, please. And also, for the benefit of those who are willing, there are comment cards that are at both entryways coming into this meeting room, and it helps us to be able to reach back out to you in case there is a need for follow-up and additional information on the subject matter that you bring to our attention. If you are and if you have filled out a public comment card, please submit it to our deputy clerk, Ms. Weaver. At this time, I ask Ms. Faith Sparkman if you will please come, Ms. Karen Chadwick, if you will follow her. Thank you.
Good morning. First thing I want to say is I handed Larry Harvey another three hundred signed petitions this morning that people want modern technology for the landfill.
Okay, I'm the chairman, and you gave it to Mr. Harvey?
Because I trusted him to give it to you.
Oh, very well. Thanks.
Okay. I have a problem with the MSBU's. I truthfully don't think that all of you understand what happened to us in District Four. So if it's okay with you, Mr. Flag, I would like Walton Pellicia to explain to the public what an MSBU is.
Want Mr. Pellicia to explain it to the public?
Yeah, because most of the people don't know what it is.
Okay, so you want him to give the technical definition or his understanding?
I'm going to refer to council for that. Let him give it, because I'm sure he can give it more defined than I can, or Mr. Leary, the one.
I just wanted to make sure that you all knew exactly what an MSBU was. Mr. Harvey, you know what it is, don't you?
We all do. And hold on one second, just as a point of order. We're not going to go up and down here. If you want the presentation for the benefit of the public, the Municipal Service Benefit Unit, if you want the definition to be expressed to the public, we're not going to go up and down. The legislators for that, we will refer to our council to please give a technical definition of that, please.
Okay, and then, could you, at the end, then, could you tell us how we get rid of it?
Okay, let's take one thing at a time, because, again, this is public comment, and if you want to be on the agenda for us to elaborate on the MSBU's, we certainly will do that, and we can make that happen. But for your three minutes, half of it is gone. Mr. Castleberry.
MSBU is a municipal service benefit unit whereby the county creates a geographic area, decides based on desires of the citizens to provide a specific service, generally road maintenance or paving, and it assesses each piece of property within that geographical boundary to a fee on their tax bill to provide the services, generally maintenance or paving of roads.
Okay. Thank you.
It's a special assessment and not a tax.
And it is not imposed by the county. It was a voluntary creation of that MSBU.
That's been the general practice of the county, to only create them when there is a great desire of the citizens in a particular area to actually do that.
But those people that live within that district must sign up for that and agree to that. Is that correct?
They don't have to sign up. I don't understand the question, I guess.
Well, it's not, is it, or is it something the county imposes upon them, or something they choose to have imposed upon themselves?
It is something that the county could impose without taking any citizen requests or desires or petitions, but the county has had a policy of only doing it when there was a, I don't know if we had a percentage or whatever, we only did it when enough people signed petitions requesting that we do it. And I don't think we've ever done one without great support of the people in the area.
And also, the MSBU situation really is occurring because of the practices prior to having proper subdivision ordinances and codes and things of that nature. So it's really a way to try to rectify past situations that should not be happening as of today, because developers are now required to have some minimal standards in each of those areas. And so we do recognize and realize that the MSBU's have an imbalance. And I have been, as chairman, I have been in discussion with the county administrator, and we do share in the concerns of individuals that are in MSBU's as it relates to being able to get a more balanced return on the investment. So, you know, there are some things that happen prior to comprehensive plans and regulations as it relates to growth and development, and the MSBU's was an opportunity to keep us from being any further behind than what we were. However, as times have evolved and times have changed, there is a need to do some tweaking and some counterbalancing, if I may, of those situations. And it's no different in any progressive movement, you do need to go back and tweak and look at it. And so we are looking at the MSBU's, not from the perspective of trying to repeal the MSBU, but to make it more efficient and to make sure that there are no exclusive benefits that MSBU should be realizing that they have not realized. So that is under review.
Okay, just so you know, when we moved there, we were on the side with an MSTU. They called a meeting down at the high school and the board, we had no say-so. We were not giving petitions or not. The board voted in at that time that we would have MSBU's in our district, just so you know that.
Okay, so let's, by general consensus, let's put a discussion on the agenda so that everyone can be prepared to talk about the subject of MSBU's, MSTUs, and when we can do that review, we could also talk about how progressively we're thinking to make sure that any inequities that may exist in two thousand and fifteen that did not exist, you know, when they were created, is counterbalanced. And that's no more than fair for us to do that, and we're willing.
And I have one other little paper I'm going to give you. This is some statistics about three fifteen, the rest I will have for you to follow. But right now, on three fifteen, two thousand one hundred ninety-three students are in the three schools. We have seventeen deputies, and that includes the captain. The volunteer fire departments and EMS workers I will have for you in two weeks, letting you know how bad three fifteen is of the lives that you have at stake. So I'm going to give this to you.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't want... Again, thank you so much for sharing the data with us, and we do know that three fifteen is overtaxed, and we will continue to hear your concerns, share in those concerns, and move us forward. Mr. Harvey?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Ms. Sparkman, last Friday, we had a meeting here, Ms. Burge and myself and Mr. Djokovic, about the MSBU's. I have five in my area, two hundred and thirty-one miles worth of dirt roads. Yesterday, I sent an email to our administrator about some of the inequities that our chairman's talking about, and we are looking at ways to clean some of that up. Back years ago, when they were first started, I was president of the Landowners Association. We had to get something done in the West Putnam area because the county just couldn't maintain our roads. And we've done a good job, but we didn't foresee what was taking place with Better Place Plan monies and things. So we are working that out, and we're going to have an answer for that pretty soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Ms. Chadwick, you're next.
Morning, thank you. I was concerned about the water quality in the Rodman area, and I was looking into the herbicide applications. And I sent this email with a link to all of you that shows that a hundred and seventy-two acres last year were sprayed with herbicides in Rodman and at a cost of ten thousand dollars. So I hear a lot of people saying, you know, the water is never sprayed, it's just managed by the drawdown, but that's, you know, obviously not true. And I have photographs of all that, you know, when it was all blocked and after they sprayed it, and it was all brown and settling into the water. And then last week, I went to a meeting about, over at the IFIS facility, about the Orange Lake management with the herbicides. They wanted to do a big cleanup of all the, like, get rid of the floating tusks and manage it just for open water, excuse me, for boating. And there was a man there, Don Stubbs, has been with the EPA for thirty-six years, and he said, "Most herbicide production companies are foreign, and those companies fund their own risk-to-benefit studies." That's kind of like what you were talking about, the scientists who are paid to do the studies, you know, it can be questionable, the results. I asked if the EPA duplicates those studies to verify results, and he said, "No, they just go over the, they review the studies and determine whether they're approved or not for use in the states." So you remember, DDT and Agent Orange, they thought that it was okay. So if there are foreign companies funding the studies, you know, the companies that are making the products that are being used here, that's, you know, causes me concern. What is, what is in that, you know? So and then also, I sent this in, the counts from the last three years that do show that during the two thousand and eleven and twelve period, that the visitor counts were higher than the following two years, which is what I've observed personally, being out there. I live right by Kittenwood, you know, and I go down there during the drawdown and not during the drawdown. And it does seem like there are a lot more people out there, and that does prove it, I suppose you could say.
Ms. Chadwick, thank you again for, number one, for sharing. We receive from time to time anonymous emails, and we receive anonymous newsletters and a whole lot of things. And when you receive those kind of documents, you can't call and confirm their source, and things get repeated, and we call those rumors. And once, you know, those things are repeated over and over and over and over, people start believing without having facts. And so thank you so much for sharing and also allowing us to know the source of your information when it's all said and done. The county's position on this entire situation is more related to us having a representation through both the House and the Senate. And so that's why we fine-tuned the resolution that was originally proposed, to make sure that we have someone in Tallahassee that can be brought up to speed as it relates to what needs to happen. And I want all of our citizens to know that this Board of County Commissioners will certainly not be making the decision alone on the future. We will have input, just like any of our other citizens will have, but we will not be the decision-makers, we will not be the jury, for lack of a better word, as it relates to Rodman. We asked to be brought to the table for this discussion, because the discussion, obviously, was brought to our attention through the news media, and blessings upon the news media when there are situations that are going on that various people who need to know or who ought to know does not know. But at the same time, we are monitoring, we are getting information that there is a meeting that is going to be scheduled even, I think, next week in Tallahassee. Everyone that is along the St. Johns River has been requested to be represented there. There is a regional meeting that is coming up. There is nothing that's going to happen overnight where someone, you know, obviously waves a magic wand. We have individuals in this county that are all the way to one extreme and all the way to the other extreme. And it's so, it's so important that those of us who are elected to represent, that we are optimistic, we're open-minded, and that we listen well, and that we bring back the facts there and be a partner to this. So thank you so much for your presentation.
Can I just ask, what do you mean, everyone along the St. Johns River?
Those individual communities that are along the St. Johns River have been invited to come to an open forum in Tallahassee. And then when I'm saying everyone, I'm saying the various communities and its open government there for that to happen. Contrary to what some folk think, there is no secret meeting as it relates to an elected official there as, serving as a board. And so that meeting, I understand, is going to be publicized as well, but it's a part of Representative McBurney, is that his name?
Yes, sir.
There that is calling for, and it's going to be doing their regular committee meeting.
And when is that? Do you know?
Seventeenth of March. Eight o'clock in the morning.
How are people supposed to know about that? That's the first I've heard of it.
Well, again, it's a committee meeting. The stuff that's happening in Tallahassee right now, if we don't follow up on it, we won't know about it.
Right.
So yes, so it's a matter of going to the website and following what's happening in the committee there.
Right.
So it's not, again, a decision that's being made, but committees are showing interest in what's happening throughout the state.
Thank you. I just hate for people to be misled. The water is not pristine, and please don't drink it. It's, it's got a lot of stuff in there, you know.
Someone was advertising that it was potable water there, but either way, thank you for bringing it to our attention.
It would take a lot to clean it up.
Okay? That is all of the speaker cards that I have there. Individuals who choose to come and speak, have not submitted a speaker's card, this is your opportunity to come and share with us.
Good morning, everybody. Why you smiling?
You want me frowning?
I say you were smiling. Had you had a chance to go and look at that trail where I mentioned about the water eroding?
Yes, sir.
And had y'all come to some kind of conclusion on what y'all can do to kind of get some of that water off us before we start getting into the rainy season?
That is a Public Works question, and again, I try to make it, it's precisely clear. If you could pose the question. Yes, sir, I have had an opportunity to go and ride the area that you spoke of. I do know that it is a work in progress. It's not progressing along maybe as quickly as you think it should there, but I am relying on our engineers to make sure that that water situation is resolved. We had an extensive meeting in our strategic planning on last week. Public Works know where we stand and what has to happen, and so it's not falling on deaf ears.
Okay, I got another question. Anytime a contractor bid on a job, is it not that contractor's responsibility to have all this material and supplies and everything to do that job when he give a bid on a contract?
It depends on the specificity of the contract. Oftentimes, a contract may be a partnership that requires the county to provide some materials and so on, unless we're looking at the specific contract to know what the material expectations are, what the labor side and things of that nature. So if there is a specific contract that, you know, you have in mind, if you can tell us, you know, where it is and what project it is, we can pull the contract and we can follow.
Well, the fire station, I noticed that it seemed like the county is putting more, you know, time into hauling dirt out there for the fire station than I look at most jobs. Like, when you built your church, it wasn't your responsibility to bring your lumber and your bricks and all of that. The county have so much work that needs to be done, till I don't understand, why would you actually contribute, you know, time that could be going towards the taxpayers on cleaning ditches, fixing roads, putting dirt along some of the hole, and building up roads that have been washed out? But when you see a truck constantly going hauling dirt one way, and then you drive down the road, you're dropping in holes along the shoulder, it kind of seemed like the taxpayers kind of getting the short end of the stick, because this man making a living, and at the same time, he getting help to make a living, but the ones paying the taxes have to deal with all these bad roads and stuff. And even I still come back again and was wondering, when are they going to fix McCormick Road in front of the post office? That's actually an eyesore. There's so many things in the county is being neglected, just like the railing on Moody Road, as long as they have been finished with that project, they hadn't even put the rails up. And even behind the road department on Camp Road, the road done caved in, all they do is put up a barricade, go down Cracker Swamp Dirt Road. They got a big hole on side of the road. They need to start band-aiding and start completing. They started digging the ditch on Putnam Boulevard, they made it right up there by the fence at the county road department stop, they ain't never been back. If they don't stop playing checkers throughout the county, there's nothing going to be completed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spill, for your comment and your observations, and our Public Works Department definitely is understaffed. We have known that for years. Again, you have to recognize and realize the dilemma that we're in. We had a strategic meeting last week with our leaders in Public Works, and they're doing their level best to do some efficiencies. And so you will also see some progress in those various areas. So thank you again for your observations. Any other public comments? We will move past public comments. Commissioners, we have the consent agenda as the next item. It has already been requested. Our administrator wanted to elaborate more on item C, and then plus, we do have Mr. Rick Haven, who wants to make some conversation as well. Are there any other items that any of the commissioners choose to pull before approval of the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull item H, please.
Okay, item H is pulled.
I'd like to pull item G.
Item G is pulled. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Items A, which is list of committee minutes recommendation distributed to become part of the record. Item B, list of correspondence distributed to become part of the record. Item D, Public Works FDOT supplemental joint participation agreement, number one, two hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and Item D, Public Works FDOT supplemental joint participation agreement number one, two hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. Additional funding for the FPL street lighting for concrete utility poles along US seventeen in East Palaca. Item E, Public Works resolution authorizing execution of FDOT utility work agreement for financial reimbursement of relocation. Of county water main along State Road fifteen, which is Highway seventeen, which was approved in January of two thousand fifteen. Item F, Public Works bid number fifteen dash oh eight award to Halifax Paving Incorporated, two million, three hundred and fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and six dollars and ninety-five cent. Which is the SCOP program and supplemented by the Better Place Plan, three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. Milling and resurfacing of County Road two oh nine from West River Road to Paramount Bluff Road. Item I, Public Works modification number three to Division of Emergency Management sub grant ten thousand eight hundred dollars. Hazard mitigation, ha- hazard mitigation grant program agreement for Paramount Bluff Drainage, eight thousand one hundred FEMA, two thousand seven hundred transportation. Item J, administration, reappointment of Commissioner Chip Libel and Alex McCoy, two thousand fifteen to two thousand seventeen North Florida Economic Development Partnership Board of Directors. I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Subapproval.
Proper motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Item C, resolution authorizing USDA state revolving loan, uh revolving fund loan program application for wastewater treatment plant. Mr. Leary.
Yeah, sure, this uh resolution would authorize the uh final component of the funding for the wastewater system under construction in East Palaca. Uh, the funding for that system is being provided for by a grant and loan from the Rural Development, USDA Rural Development. And uh state revolving loan fund in, in two separate parcels. Uh, the first uh package, first part of that has already been completed. Uh, the second component of that, which is before you today, uh has been um held off until this point to ascertain the exact amount that might be needed. Uh, which has been determined to be one million, four hundred and two thousand dollars. Uh, this resolution has been provided for, to us by uh the state revolving loan. Personnel and it's just simply been modified for the county's uh, for the county's use, but this is the uh, uh, this is the final paperwork uh that will complete the funding for that project.
Okay. Any questions from commissioners thus far?
Mr. Leary, I do.
The Harvey.
Four hundred and two thousand is the new loan? Is that what we're?
One million, four hundred and two thousand.
Okay.
Complete the project funding for the.
How, how long is that for? How many years?
It'll be a twenty year loan.
Twenty year loan. Thank you, sir.
Okay, Mr. Rick Haven, good morning.
What again?
One million, four hundred and two thousand.
Okay, my turn?
Yes, sir.
All right. Um, going through the, the two thousand twelve uh CAFSA report. We got a revolving, several revolving loans in there that. Won't even mature, uh, one of them not to twenty twenty-nine and one to, to twenty forty-eight. Both of which are being paid by funds out of the Better Place Plan. In addition to loans, there were also bonds sold. Uh, revenue bond, again, this is for the East Putnam Water Treatment. Uh, four million, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. That's revenue series two thousand eight B. Two million, fifty-four thousand, nine hundred. This is the Department of Vegeticulture, again, a series two thousand eight A bond. Both of which. The repayment is two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year out of the Better Place Plan. I mean, how many times can you keep borrowing? For the water treatment system and taking it out of the Better Place Plan? It, it sooner or later, you're gonna run out of money. And i- isn't this gonna be repaid? The, this new one, four hundred and two, one million, four hundred and two thousand, again, is gonna be. Funds out of the Better Place Plan. You're trying to take and get loans when you don't even know whether or not the, this is gonna pass and vote. If I was, had a house and kept going and borrowing loans that picks up my house, at some point, I'm gonna run out of money to pay the loans.
Yes, sir. There's a difference in using um the funds to repay versus pledging uh, you know, collateral. Uh, and we all have to do that uh in order to do business, e- except the few who um does not.
No, at some point, I stop getting loans until I can. Get even. I can't keep spending out of my paycheck until I run out of checks.
Yes, sir. And you, you're right, that works for you personally uh there. Uh, this county, who happens to be an economically disadvantaged county, uh strives every single day to maximize the dollars. And in many cases, we do have to leverage uh situations in order to advance us. And because we are an anemic uh county with an anemic tax base, uh we have had to, over the years, uh. Operate on grants and on loans.
No, at some point, you just gotta stop spending. That's a ro- the problem with not only the county, but across the whole United States. We're, we're spending. You got the, the, the Federal Reserve is printing some eighty-five billion dollars a, a month. In treasury bonds and they turn around and take them themselves, amortizing our debt. Against debt. And then you guys are almost doing the same thing. You gotta stop spending.
Well, thank you, thank you for your analogy, but let me give you this analogy, Mr. Haven. Uh, there are people in their households who go on shopping sprees. There are other people who are investing. And this county commission is investing in infrastructure to make sure that we can do what we've been charged to do. And that is to make our county a progressively economic developed community. And over the years, uh, it's been, it's been a long process. And so investments are being made. Now, if you have evidence of the county recklessly spending taxpayers' dollars, then certainly bring that to the table. But don't compare us to the federal government because.
How about the, the?
We do have to balance, we have to balance um.
Okay, how about the increase in the landfill? That, again, that's reckless spending as far as I'm concerned. At some point, you're gonna come back to the taxpayers and raise our property values to pay for these loans.
Okay, uh, nothing as it relates to uh the landfill is being done maliciously. If you can rewind the tape and replay, you will see that this commission took the initiative to slow the train down. We knew that there would be temporary consequences in slowing it down. But at the same time, we do have regulatory agencies uh that pretty much dictate to us and tell us things. We have citizens on one side, in our left ear, that are telling us, do not privatize, do not regionalize. We've got citizens in the right ear that's saying, you know what? We can't afford these rates. And at some point in time, this commission is deliberating day in and day out on how we're going to counterbalance our current dilemma. Because every single one of us are paying taxes. Some of us are paying taxes, not only as private citizens, but as entrepreneurs and business owners in this community. And um, when it's all said and done, there is no free ride. We're feeling the heat, we're feeling the pain, and it's not just the heat because our citizens are coming uh to us. We're feeling the heat because. We're economically challenged as well. And we're trying to make the very best decisions. And we're hoping over the next few weeks. That we will have uh, uh some reports that's going to uh shed some additional light on the subject. But when it's all said and done, this legislative body has to give instructions to the administrative uh component of county government, and we've got to move us forward. And so that's where we are. Yes, sir, Commissioner?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
One of the main things that we're doing with the water and sewer, as Commissioner Flag mentioned, is to help bring forward jobs. I remember that you mentioned at one of the meetings that you haven't seen much uh in the way of that. And part of it is that our county is uh missing with infrastructure. Industries that come in want water and sewer. And one thing that I really wanted to clarify, uh, you mentioned we're paying that with the Better Place Plan. There's a very small part of it that we've pledged the Better Place Plan. And um, the loans that we get from USDA are grants and loans. And actually, we're paying for a very small part of the whole bill because of going through USDA and getting the grants that we got. And I wanted Mr. Leary to elaborate a little bit about the amount that comes from the Better Place Plan. And why, so that you can understand that. We're not paying whole bills with that and not spending what we don't have. So, Mr. Leary, could you just elaborate on? How we're paying, a- and the loans are for forty years usually, right?
Well, the USDA rural development loans are for forty years. But yes, there is some money being allocated for the, for the retirement of principal and interest on the USDA loans, which are. Which were invested for capital improvement purposes uh for the, for the construction of the system. So there is some Better Place money being allocated to assist with that until such time as the, as the user fees are uh. Sufficient to re- retire that debt themselves. And of course, that can, that will occur hopefully when, when we have a sufficient customer base to generate enough revenue. So that uh, so that we can relieve the Better Place plan of, 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 of that burden.
And the Better Place Plan, one of its purposes was to develop infrastructure and water and sewer. So it's being used exactly for what it was pledged to do. And um. It is, I, I just, I want you to understand, it's a very important thing for our county, that we do that so we can get out of the.
If it was important, then why did you continue the moratorium on the impact fees? The impact fees are what's supposed to take and pay for those increased things for the businesses you wanna bring in. You know, if a business is gonna come here, the, I think Craig Sharar pointed out two weeks ago. Look at all the, the Family Dollar stores and so forth that were built here. They, they would have paid the twenty-one thousand dollars in a heartbeat. It wouldn't have made any difference to them. And that would have contributed to then, for all these things you wanna do, the water treatment systems and so forth that, that attract more businesses. But you, at some point, you're putting this in the back of all the taxpayers that live here.
Okay, Mr. Haven.
And that's wrong.
You, you're speaking uh from a kaleidoscope of, of issues and activities uh there. You, you've gone now over to the impact fees and in the wisdom uh of the, the local legislators in looking at. We have to not only look at it from what's happening within our county. We have to look at this region. We have to look at our state. And, 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 and we are in global competition. There's no any ifs and buts about that. But the truth of the whole matter is. Uh, when we are looking at the forecast and we're listening to uh the, the economics of, and the dynamics of our own community. It's a lot of factors that we weigh in on uh to make a decision as it relates to whether we should continue the moratorium. Or whether or not it should be, you know, uh, lifted. When it's all said and done, uh, we can take one slice of the pie and we can make it one thing, and we could take another slice and make it another, another situation. We're looking at the entire pie. We're looking at the entire condition uh that we fit in in northeast Florida. And yes, we may be the last to grow, we may be the last uh, uh to, to thrive uh in this area. We're learning uh from others' mistakes who have had um what you call expeditious growth. But when it's all said and done, if our community will continue to pull together in the same direction, keep us on point, we don't have an issue there. But when we're comparing apples and oranges, it does make it difficult uh for us to express and explain uh the dynamics of what you're saying. Because you're, you're now moving over to impact fees, which is totally different from what we started.
That was just, you know, because Mrs. Harris said that one of the reasons we're spending this money is to attract businesses here. And my point was, and Craig's point le- two weeks ago was, then you should have kept the MP pack fees, didn't. And the business would have paid for that infrastructure that you're trying to put in there for businesses. But right here, just in the loans you did in two thousand eight. Encumbers five and a half, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars alone, just to pay for the bonds. How about the loans themselves and the interest rate? The loan payment on one of them is a hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred dollars a year. The loan payment, the other one's two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred dollars a year. So there's uh almost four hundred thousand. So we got a million dollars coming out of. The Better Place Plan just to pay these two loans. And now you're gonna get another loan.
I can't speak to the dynamics of the numbers that you are, are bringing because you, again, have done your homework, I'm sure. But one thing that I, I, I must say to you and to our community as a whole, we cannot sit back and be pitiful. We have to do certain things and make wise choices. And also invest in our infrastructure so that we can co- cross the threshold of economic advancement. We have to do that. And so although the season of us uh being in the valley has been a little bit more extensive than what all of us would have wanted it to be. Uh, uh, we appreciate, again, the, the accountability uh that, that is required of us. But at the same time, we are moving toward the things that you would want a sustainable county to look like. And it's a process to get there. It is a process to get there. None of us, again, when it comes down to even dealing with the, the issue of, of, of waste. You know, how much is enough? How much is too much? You know, if, if economy of scale uh works uh there, then it means you need more to pay the fee that you're paying now. But as long as you have less, then it has to be subsidized. And it's, it's a business decision and it's very complicated. All of the reports and the hundreds of pages that each of us have to process independently. And then come in this public meeting and bring all of our thoughts together so that we can uh reach a consensus and move us forward. That really is what it's about. And we're striving, sir.
To me and to most of the people in this audience, it's just, it's reckless spending.
Okay, well, thank you for your opinion and thank you for showing up uh to share that with us. Okay, Ms. Janet Smith, you also wanted to speak on this issue.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I see these lovely charts out here in the hall. And the thing is, you're obviously proud of that. Now, there's some things you could look at, you know, the point one mile here and there, um, we wander about. But to Mr. Haven's point. Why do we not have such detail on exactly what the Better Place Plan has been obligated for today? You're obligating more. But where is that report that says how many things Better Place Plan is the secondary for? From two thousand two all the way to the present day. On the uh figures that Mr. Jones brought, we see that there is a debt service of one point five eight three, two hundred and sixty-one. And we see a list of things completed, but we see a couple of recurring, and that is not explained. Therefore, we do not have a full report on exactly how much in total has been obligated out of the Better Place Plan. And again, we are rushing to ballot when we don't have full information. One thing that was very, very worrisome to us is the Oversight Committee Chairman. Requested that you keep the wording the same so that they could look over the debt aspect. In particular, when Commissioner Harvey was talking about retiring some debt on the jail, which has to do directly with our taxes. That was just kind of put aside. And also, the words that Mr. Jones asked for. Were decided that, no, we won't have those in there anymore. And that was your personal decision because there was no discussion of that. So just wanted to.
Decision, Ms. Smith?
Yours, sir.
Okay, there are five elected officials up here and one of us cannot move the county's business forward. It does take three.
Well, when Mr. Jones asked for having that input, if you go back and actually listen to what was said. That point was not discussed. And furthermore, all the other citizens' requests about that wording were frankly ignored.
All right.
Thank you.
If you was, thank you so very much. Okay. Commissioners, you have before you resolution authorizing USDA state revolving fund loan program application for the wastewater treatment plant. What is your pleasure?
Chairman, I'd like to move it forward, but with a comment that the county's audit, annual audit is available to anybody in the audience. Anytime you wanna get a copy and read it. And then it would help in your decision to see if we're on sound financial footing or not. With that, I move.
Second.
Have a proper motion and a second. Further discussion? District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District three, yes. Thank you very kindly. Item G, Public Works Florida Department. Item G, Public Works, Florida Department of Transportation, Transportation Regional Incentive Program Agreement and Resolution, Widening and Resurfacing of County Road Two Sixteen from State Road One Hundred to US Highway Seventeen, seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Mr. Michael.
No.
No, this was Commissioner Harris.
Okay. Thank you. One of the most important things that we need to do as a county to pull ourselves up is to keep jobs and bring new jobs. And this is exactly one of those things. When the governor came to Polatka and met with us, I was chair at the time, and I met with him. And I told him that we had an existing business, Georgia Pacific, and that they had been to see us. And Two Sixteen is the main road that their trucks come in and out. And it's only two lanes. They needed a turn lane, and they needed it widened. They would have backlogs of trucks lined up and blocking traffic. And we need to keep industries that are in our county going. We need to support them. We need to keep the jobs that we have, just as important as bringing new ones in. I told him how important this was. Jobs are one of his things, too. And he brought this forward and moved it up on the list. And now it's coming before us. So, he said he would do what he could, and he brought some things home. And this is coming before us, and the state is going to pay for that. We're going to keep an industry functioning better in our county and keeping some jobs. And I just wanted, I didn't want that just to slip through without us recognizing it.
Absolutely.
Oh, yes, safety and jobs. So, with that, I'd like to move approval of item G.
We have a proper motion on the floor to move the agreement and resolution. And second. Multiple seconds, thank you.
For those that are wondering, it's the Mill Road, as we refer to it.
Most definitely. Further discussion? District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District three? Yes. Motion carries. Item H, Public Works, Perpetual Ease Ment to FDOT for bike path along a part of State Road One Hundred, one dollar, four hundred feet east of State Road Nineteen and State Road One Hundred intersection, and sixty feet north of edge of State Road One Hundred.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask Mr. Djokovitch to the podium, please. And Mr. Djokovitch, good morning, sir.
Morning.
Don, all I needed on this was a little bit of clarity. I know that acquisitions are going on in that area right now. We have some business owners that are requesting the trail not follow the railroad bed and detour through Phillips Dairy Road. And I just want to ask what you have heard lately on that discussion.
Actually, we haven't heard anything different in the last month or so. This is just giving us easement in case we use it. There's no indication that we're getting any funding there. No construction funds at all programmed for that.
Okay. I agree with the easement. And, but in your conversations, which are more frequent than we commissioners or the trail committees, if you could just express our desire to maybe incorporate Phillips Dairy Road, which ironically comes out to meet our Placot Urban Trail. It's a better alignment, in my opinion.
Yes, and they're looking at that.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, Ms. Smith? It's Janet Smith. Her card indicates she wants to speak about this issue. It's been answered, okay?
Thank you, Don.
Entertained a motion to authorize perpetual ease ment. Proper motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign, hearing none, motion carries. Item seven on the agenda is Dr. Neil Letts' Recommendation to Export Solid Waste and Abolish Recycling. Welcome, Dr. Letts. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. This is my, in two thousand and six, Tim Kaiser and I fought this battle, which we're fighting again to stop this trash importation fiasco. We won then, and we thought we won on the poll. And the commissioner's decision to delay this, and you appointed a committee. However, in two fourteen, there appeared, April, there appeared Leary Castleberry Gas Proposal, Five-Fold Landfill Expansion. But this thrust to continue the expansion is, is, continues via committee that by and large looks to Mr. Gas and a hired moderator, I don't know where he came from and who he's paying for it, as sources of alternatives ignoring representatives from Waste Management and APAGE. Now, this committee barely touches on the other alternatives, which are exporting incineration paralysis gasification. Waste management has two goals. One is to reduce volume, which can be done about ninety percent reduction. And the second is very important, is to trap or destroy toxins. Expanding landfilling does not satisfy any of these criteria. Mr. McIntyre and Mr. McGinnis attend the meetings and are ignored. They could answer questions that would direct our commission toward developing requests for proposals written by the commission rather than by Mr. Castleberry and Mr. Leary that are sprung on the commission in the Polatka Daily News. And that springing is what pulled me back into this battle, which I thought we had won permanently in two thousand and six, but apparently not. There are serious flaws in our county management drive our solid waste cost to the highest top two in Florida. Our Waste Pro sham recycling program processes four tons, or two percent of our daily one hundred eighty tons of waste, or twenty times weekly, twenty tons weekly, times fifty equals one thousand tons yearly. And it's billed to us at over a million dollars on our tax bills. And this comes out to a thousand dollars a ton. Now, two percent means nothing to the landfill volume, but at one thousand dollars a ton, we could do away with this today. And everybody looks at me kind of funny and says, you know, no, can't be done somehow. I think you call up Waste Pro and say, we're not going to pay for this anymore. Don't run those honey wagons around and charge us a thousand dollars a ton. Now, why hasn't your search committee picked this little fact up? All it took me was a telephone call to Waste Management. I said, how many tons you process a week? Said twenty tons a week. Hundred eighty tons a day? Two percent. Mr. Gas claims that using ground wood as cover dirt at the landfill somehow filters leachate, when the only possible source of benzene and methane is buried wood and paper, because plastics and tires are inert. They don't ooze anything out. Now, dirt is silicon dioxide or sand, which we make glass out of. And wood and paper are putting toxins in the top, which we're sucking out of the bottom, as leachate toxins. Paper and wood must be kept above ground for combustion or gasification. Now, you all have my pie graph. Pie graph, I discovered, is published by the EPA, who ought to know a little bit about what's going on in the whole U.S. And it shows, if you look down in the lower left corner, that the only decent energy sources to run gasification are rubber and plastics, which are made out of crude oil, which gives us our gasoline, diesel fuel, and jet fuel. Now, paper is a very poor source of energy, because it's got sixty percent water bound up in its molecules. Now, in order to make gasification work, the Fisher-Tropes process was invented in Germany to take coal and shoot steam on it when it's burned. So, you get your carbon monoxide and your hydrogen. So, the carbon monoxide can be regarded as half-burned coal, and hydrogen is hydrogen, and the mixture is called syn gas. And you take this syn gas, run it through some metal catalyst to get your diesel fuel and your gasoline and your jet fuel. As the graph shows, the process does not have enough carbon, hydrogen. It must be increased by increasing the percentage of rubber and plastics beyond the twenty percent as much as possible. Paper is sixty percent, and wood fifty-two percent chemically combined water. It's got to be driven out by the energy and the process. Dirt and water and yard waste and food waste make them very poor energy sources. A solid, for example, a solid paper phone book or anything else is hard to keep burning, while wood is much easier. And charcoal briquettes, which are made out of roasting wood, to drive the water out of it, burn very well, because it's almost pure carbon. So, gasification with all this wood and paper going in, you get plenty of oxygen, and you got to get more carbon and hydrogen in there, which could come from tires. Now, I think Mr. Lible is very familiar with what it costs to. And I would ask you a question. How much did you pay to get rid of your tires per ton?
It could run as high as a hundred and twenty-five dollars up to a hundred and forty-five.
Now, we imported tires. We went and got them. This is, could be money coming in. You got to shred them in order to avoid mosquitoes. And you can pile them above ground. The only problem is a fire hazard. So, you get a lot of dirt around with your front end loaders and a lot of water out of a pond. So, with a very unlikely chance that this catches fire, you got to put it out fast. Otherwise, you don't have to bury them. You go out to landfill, you find these mined tires stacked all over the place. They're scattered. It's a mess. So, you dug them out. If we imported them and charged the people who sent them to us a collection fee and stored them, and shredders cost, the biggest shredders, which would handle far more than we're likely to get, cost a million dollars, brand new. You can go online, and whoever would go out there and get one could shop around and find stuff, you know? I mean, I buy used cars, because they're a lot cheaper, and they run just as far, you know? Nobody wants tires. He told you what you can get for them. Mr. Lible's been there, done that. He's paid. We have Mr. Gas tell us, oh, we got to bring the tires in. It's going to cost us eighty dollars a ton. Then we're going to shred them and export them. I say, why export them? You're going to need them for solid waste, for gasification. The future is in thermal treatment of waste. The future is not going backwards and increasing our volume of solid waste. It's decreasing the volume of solid waste. And you got to control the tox- toxins, not by pouring wood into our landfill and burying it and creating methane and benzene. But you need something to trap the heavy metals and the arsenic, at which the beauty of the gasification process is that it turns this stuff into a liquid substances, which melt in with your silicon dioxide, and comes out as glass. Exactly the same process that the government uses to clean up our World War II nuclear waste. Exactly the same process. Now, the business model for collection shredding of tire fuel not happen instantaneously in the short run, but should not be neglected in our present plans for the future. I just talked to Mr. Latham and Mr. McGinnis about it. I said, this is a talking point. They want, they've tried tires. And I say, we limit four tires per family per year. Why the heck can't Waste Pro just throw them into their trucks as they go by every week and stack? Get a shredder and shred them up and stack them, and get ready for the future. Now... Here's another thing. Mr. McGinnis, Mr. Latham tell me that the landfill can be placed dormant. We're always told, well, we either import and keep it open, or we got to close it. Now, this is what we get. But, Mr., they tell me, and I'm going to use the word dormant, but we don't have to close the landfill. Now, the next question is, if they want to buy property here, then you're going to have to work it out. I think it's just a piece of dirt. You can lease it, you can rent it, or you can buy it. And what's the problem? You know, there's no problem. We're told that it costs over a million dollars in a year to build a transfer station. This will be in their request for proposal. And I think, as I understand the process right, you develop the request for proposal, and then they abide by it now. I think these gentlemen should come before the commission or a workshop of you commissioners and sit down and discuss personally, because our management is not capable of doing this. Our county management keeps bringing this landfill thing back up and back up and back up. And we cannot bring more trash in the county. It's going backwards. It's not even standing still. This is one of the reasons this type of mentality drives the brightest students out of this county. They take one look at this county and how it's run, and they say, goodbye. I'm going to college, and I'm not coming back. It's called, I'm not going to use that term. Now, there's no doubt in my mind that Waste Management or another company's long-term goals are reducing waste to zero. Their business experience has shown them the necessity of abandoning landfilling in the long term, which they're trying to figure out what to do. In the shorter run, Waste Management is ready to accept a request for proposal to bail us out of our immediate problem by exporting our one hundred and eighty tons daily. That includes constructing a transfer station, which is only needed. We only can put it in eight trucks and haul it to Georgia. Eight trucks. The Leary Castleberry plan was going to stick us with twenty-five million dollars of cost and run a hundred trucks a day on our roads. Now, also, this, we're told it's going to take a year to build a transfer station. And they tell me you can do it in three or four months easily. So, now, this is approximate figures, and I think I'm pretty close. Brings up the problem of our county administrator, who keeps thrusting this expansion in our faces despite the most recent rejection about trash more and landfill sales. Committee appointed by the commissioner somehow came under the control of Mr. Gas and some guy is a coordinator. What do I got here? He's a coordinator, and he hands out all this stuff. And he writes stuff on the board, and he tells the commission, well, this is what we're going to do. There's a committee, not the commission, the committee. Tells the committee, gee, this is what we're doing, right? And everybody sits there, you know? It was very troublesome to have, they allow ten minutes at the end of their meeting for everybody to give comments. And I've had Mr. McIntyre and Mr. McGinnis sit there in the whole meeting, and the people are going, blah, 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 blah. How many tons should we import? Should we close the transfer stations that we have both southeast and in the west? And gee, that would save money. And then people say, yeah. Then people are going to start tossing tires in the woods, you know? Why don't we just throw them in our Waste Pro chucks, you know? Seriously. You know, they go by. We want to throw them in the bush, or we want to collect them, shred them, and store them, and get ready for plasma arc? You know, it's so simple. So, now, again, if you want to save a million dollars today, or maybe next week, I would make a motion to say, we're not going to pay Waste Pro a thousand dollars a ton to handle out twenty-four tons a day, you know? Not going to do it. Four thousand dollars for two... Not gonna do it, four thousand dollars for two, four tons a day? I mean, where's your, where's your search committee? Oh, we have Mr. Castleberry and Mr., uh, Leary. They're authors of the two percent, one thousand ton Phony Republic Recycling Program. They proposed one thousand ton a day, one hundred trucks a day, fifteen-year contract to instance, to increase our future poison expensive, one garbage to five garbage bars, which the taxpayers have already voted down twice. I mean, how many times is this rubber ball, dirty rubber ball, gonna be popped back on us? Mr. Leary almost, he's talking about better places money. He almost fell out of his chair at the last meeting with delight that the special places money be used to retire late. Retired debt, more money in this quarter. Mr. Leary and Mr. Castleberry must go.
Mr. Letts.
I am not finished, sir. You talk a lot. You talk a lot. I'm talking to the commission. I am talking, Mr....
Okay, and so am I. Hold, hold your point just a moment, please.
No, I'm not hold... I have about two paragraphs and I'll be done. I am going to talk and I'm, and you talk too much, sir. You talk too much.
You're also going to abide by the rules.
You talk too much. The rules, the rules, you talk too much, sir.
Mr. Letts.
Now, we... Mr. Castleberry should go. Mr. Castleberry should go. We export our garbage.
We keep our landfill dormant. We stop one million dollars recycling spend and we don't allow Leary and Castleberry to write RFPs, okay?
Mr. Letts. You could finish your commentary if you would listen, but you refuse not to. Thank you.
Let's move.
We're gonna take a five-minute recess.
That's good. Thank you.
You don't run my ad yet?
Good. Tim, Mr. Letts, he may have a wallet up here. I'm damned if I don't. I know. I think it, it... I'll see if I can get it. Our meeting is now back in session. Out of all due respect, uh, there were some individuals who were not related to the presentation whose name was used and they have requested, uh, that they have opportunity just to come and to make a statement, uh, for the record. Uh, please come forward. Get your name and address for the record. There's no commentary required by any of us, just for the record. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you very much for the opportunity to come up and, and discuss our concerns. Uh, my name's Charlie Latham and I'm standing with Dan McGinnis. We're both representatives of Waste Management Incorporated of Florida. Um, although we understand that there's a lot of emotion associated with this topic, uh, we're here at the, uh, to, to help the county in any way we can. Uh, we've, we've stated publicly that we have options that we think are, uh, potentially beneficial to the county and we'd be happy to discuss them at any time. Uh, we've, we never have and never will seek the assistance of citizens to represent our position. Uh, we've been treated with graciousness and courtesy by the, the committee and by this, uh, uh, com- commission as well, and we certainly intend to act the same way. Uh, we'd be interested in talking about this anytime publicly. I know Janie Coleman has been before the commission and expressed her recommendations, which very closely paralleled mine last night at the, at the, uh, commission meeting as well, so I, I, we're here to help. We're not here to be hostile and we're, we're certainly not gonna request that citizens represent our interests. We'd like to do that ourselves, so thank you, sir.
I'm Dan McGinnis, Waste Management, formerly Waste Management, a consultant now. Um, I just wanna echo what Charlie said. We have been treated with respect, very professionally, by your Solid Waste Committee. They have a very tough task of sorting through all of the information and trying to get the facts, and, uh, they've worked hard, doing a good job of representing the county, and we stand ready to assist the county in any way possible. Thank you.
Thank you again, um, for putting that on the record. Uh, allow me to say this as well, for the benefit of all concerned, whether you are a citizen of Putnam County, whether you're visiting Putnam County, whether you are an elected appointed official employee, or whatever your classification are, we have a pledge of civility. Uh, I'm trying to raise that level of awareness, uh, in this, our community, and it simply says, we will be respectful of one another even when we disagree. We will direct all comments to the issues. We will avoid personal attacks under my watch. We will honor that pledge of civility. Uh, I will not in any way, shape, form, or fashion discriminate against any citizen that comes before this Board of Commissioners for any reason. Uh, you are an American just as we all are. We all, uh, have opinions and sometimes those opinions have facts in 'em. So, what I'm saying to us is this, I will not dishonor or disrespect you in any way, shape, form, or fashion, but when I call a point of order, as the chairman of this board, I expect for there to be a moment of silence for me to make the point of order clear and then we can proceed. So, the previous speaker was not asked to stop talking, uh, permanently. It was just a request to make a point of order so that this meeting could continue to go and he could conclude and give us a synopsis of his concluding remarks. So, I just want the record to reflect that because that is how we're going to roll in our meetings because when it's all said and done, at the end of the day, these legislators are required to deliberate, to reach a consensus, and continue to move us forward. Thank you for listening. Uh, Commissioners, uh, because we did have a public hearing that was set at a time certain, I'm asking that you concur with me, uh, to take the one issue of Planning and Development Services, uh, item nine A, PV fifteen dash double oh one, vacation of Lake Shore Hills subdivision. If there's no objections, then we will hear that case, then we will go back in order with code enforcement.
Let's move, sir.
Thank you very kindly. Uh, Mr. John Salmons. Any individuals, uh, that are here, and I think that there is, uh, is it Colby Byrne, uh, to speak, uh, concerning item nine, um, as well, so please, um, stay close. We have the presentation now by our planner.
This is a request, uh, by Tim Cost, Michelle Green, and Theodore and Dale Connor to vacate the Lake Shore Hills subdivision. The Lake Shore Hills subdivision is an unrecorded plat that was established back in the early nineteen eighties. Uh, no improvements were really ever done on the subdivision. The subdivision contained four hundred seventy-five point seven seven acres and contained ninety-four lots. A portion of that subdivision was replanted in the late nineties by Gunther Neftbe. Uh, a significant portion of the subdivision is within a flood zone and, uh, there are significant wetlands on that property as well. Uh, Mr. Cost, uh, requested a vesting determination back in two thousand six and it was approved subject to, uh, Mr. Cost either putting in the roads or an MSBU being established. We actually went through the process of establishing an MSBU, but it kind of, uh, died before it actually got totally, totally done. The, uh, lots in the subdivision are presently divided into three parcels. You can kinda see them outlined there. And, uh, so they have requested that the plat be vacated and be re, uh, contained in the three lots that are presently in existence. Uh, staff has recommended that the pla- uh, plat of Lake Shore Hills subdivision be requested, uh, be, uh, vacated as requested. I know Mr. Cost is here, and I think you said somebody else, so...
Okay. All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Salmon. Uh, Mr. Tim Cost, Michelle Green, Theodore, and Dale Connor is one representing of them. Please, Mr. Cost, come, um, state your name and address for the record and share with us what you may have.
Good morning. Tim Cost, um, do you need my address or anything?
Yes, sir.
Uh, one fifty Beulah Church Road, Crescent City, Florida, three two one one two.
All right, sir. You have any commentary based on what's being presented and recommended?
No, sir. I think everything's fine.
Okay, you, as far as what is being presented, represents exactly what the owners are requesting?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you very kindly. Ms. Kathy, I'm sorry I didn't pronounce your name just right. I was trying to interpret. Uh, it says Kathy Byrne. Is that correct? Okay. If you'll have a seat just a moment, then we'll be back to you. Please, ma'am, come forward, state your name and address for the record as well.
It's Kathy Byrne, eighteen twelve County Road three oh eight in Crescent City.
Good morning.
Thank you. Um, my concern, I, I didn't exactly understand what was going on here with the vacating. Um, I just got this notice. Um, I understand now that the, they're separating the property again. Is that correct?
Let the planner put it in layman's terms, exactly what is happening.
Three parcels that it consists of, ninety-five lots are going away and it'll just be three parcels.
Okay. Um, my concern is that when I, I'm a retired state trooper with thirty-one years' experience. I served in Orlando and Dade County, and when I bought the property several years ago, I did it with the intention of retiring here and enjoying the peace and quiet. My concern is that this property, as it's being subdivided now, is it going to be developed? It's my understanding that's all wetlands back there and I don't understand the need to separate it if it's not going to be sold and, and, uh, developed.
I think you're gonna be more pleased once this is done than what you would have been had it not been done, but I'll let Mr. Salmon, uh, address that.
That was my confusion.
Let him step up to the podium and he can shed some more light on it.
Basically, the property is in three, three people's names right now, and basically all they wanna do is keep the parcels they got. There's no development proposal. If there was, uh, they would have to come back through the planning division and, and request that and it would be public hearings, but, uh, with the wetlands and, uh, uh, flood zone and the military operating zone issues, uh, that really isn't conducive to development, development.
Sound like you're safe.
Yes, it was just my concern because I'd, I'd looked at the property before on the, uh, property appraiser's website and there were no roads or anything in there, and now I'm looking at it and there are roads in there, and that was my concern, was is it being separated to be developed into a subdivision?
Ma'am, the exact opposite. But thank you so very much for, for coming and inquiring. Are there any other citizens that are, that are wanting to speak concerning the vacation of Lake Shore Hills subdivision? Close the public hearing at this time. Ask the question to each of the commissioners. Has there been any ex parte communications? District one?
I, I have spoken with Mr. Cost over the years and am familiar with the history, but lately with this closing, I have not had any ex parte communication.
Thank you. District two?
None.
District four?
None, sir.
District five?
None.
District three, none. Uh, council, any, uh, points of order?
Yes, sir.
Okay. At this time, we have before us a recommended action to vacate the plat of Lake Shore Hills subdivision as requested.
Um, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'll, I'll offer the motion as staff recommendations. What I wanna, uh, make the point to the lady, it was just at the podium, that the zoning will go from one home and five acres to one in one hundred if this goes forward, to answer your question or fear, um, for your peace and tranquility, which I respect.
I'll second that motion. Have a proper motion and a second for the approval of vacating the plat. Further discussion, commissioner deliberations. District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District three, yes. Approved for vacating. Thank you so much. Yes, sir. Okay. Commissioners, we will go back to item eight on the agenda. Item eight, a request for abatement, case number two thousand six zero one five eight nine, Warren E. Foster Senior, twelve nineteen Old Jacksonville Highway, Palaca. Mr. Salmon.
Uh, this is a, a request for abatement, but it's gonna be a little different because this is the way the property looked back when we were dealing with it. This is the way it looks today. I, uh, was going to ask you to, uh, uh, whatever decision you made about abatement, to give me time to talk to Mr. Foster because it's clear that he's working on it here. He happens to be here today, uh, and we've talked a little bit and he can come up here and, but I would like to pull this one off the abatement agenda so that we can work out what he wants to do with it and, uh, hopefully save this property.
Okay, so with a proper motion to table, would be appropriate or...
Yes.
One approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Proper motion and a second. Further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. It's off the table. Don't handle your business. Item eight B, request for abatement, case number two thousand ten double oh two ninety-one, Dorothy Smith, five twenty-nine, Lenore Avenue, Interlaken.
This property was first seen on March eighth, two thousand ten. The, uh, inspection revealed an unsafe mobile home with lots of trash and debris. Notice of violation was sent on March ninth, uh, two thousand ten. The owner came in and pulled the demolition permit on April eighth, two thousand ten. Uh, nothing happened at the site. The demolition permit expired on November seventeenth, two thousand eleven. The property, as you can tell from the picture, is, uh, is accessible, although they have to jump up, there's no steps there anymore, but they, and they have to jump up. The, uh, property, according to the code enforcement, is pretty well trashed inside. Special magistrate heard the, uh, went before the, uh, special magistrate on January twentieth, twentieth, two thousand eleven. He found the property in violation and gave the owner until February twenty-eighth, two thousand eleven to come into compliance, or a twenty-five dollar per day fine would commence, and a hundred dollar administrative fee was assessed. Nothing happened and the lien was recorded on August twenty-third, two thousand eleven. Uh, the property continued to deteriorate. On November, November twentieth, two thousand fourteen, the special magistrate authorized abatement on this property and staff is, uh, asking you to concur with this recommendation.
Thank you so much, Mr. Salmon. On item eight B, case number two thousand ten double oh two ninety-one, Dorothy Smith is the property owner, agent, or neighbor here. Anyone here to speak related to this particular case? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Okay, I knew what happened with this because another lady that co-signed for her new home was a senior citizen and she is now deceased, and this lady here, Dorothy Smith, is now living in England. So, when you do an abatement like something like this, can't something be put into the law where if she comes back to the United States, we can go after her for this money?
We're already getting a lien against the property, right, John?
Yeah, that, that's the extent of it. Any other public comment on case two thousand ten double oh two ninety-one? Close public hearing, open commissioner, uh, commentary. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval on case number two thousand ten dash zero zero two nine one.
We have a proper motion on the floor?
Second.
Second for a request for abatement, uh, to, uh, concur with the recommendation of the special magistrate, uh, there. This case has been ongoing for five years since the initial inspection. Uh, any further discussion?
None, sir.
Okay. Entertaining, uh, at this time, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing non-motion carries.
Item eight C, request for abatement, case number two thousand twelve double oh two thirty-nine, Alan and Kathy Butler, six twenty State Road, twenty-six Mill Road.
This property was first seen on April twenty-third, two thousand twelve. The initial inspection revealed the home that was significantly damaged by fire. On May eighth, two thousand twelve, the owner came in and pulled the demolition permit on May first, two thousand twelve. Actually, May eighth. On June thirtieth, two thousand twelve, this, the, uh, site inspection showed that a dangerous structure was very unstable. Uh, staff monitored the property and nothing happened. Uh, the demolition expired on January eighteenth, two thousand thirteen. The case went before the special magistrate on March twenty-first, two thousand thirteen. He found the property be in violation and gave the owner until May twenty-first, two thousand thirteen to bring the property into compliance, or a twenty-five dollar day fine would commence on May twenty-second, two thousand thirteen. Administrative fine was also charged. Uh, the case went back before the special magistrate and he found the property be in violation and, uh, the lien to be recorded. Uh, some things were done at the site, but nothing of significance. The property is now kind of laying on the ground, but it's still there. Uh, and, uh, we went before this, uh, special magistrate on November fourteenth, two thousand fourteen, and he ordered the, uh, the foreclosure abatement of the property, and we're asking you to concur with the recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Salmon. We have a request for abatement on two thousand twelve dash double oh two thirty-nine. Is the property owner, agent, or neighbor present? Do we have anyone in the audience that is prepared to speak for or against the requested action? Close the public hearing at this time. Commissioner, uh, deliberations and decisions.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move approval of staff recommendations on this case.
Second.
We have a proper motion and a second that concurs with the recommendation of the special magistrate in order to staff to abate the property. Further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like saying, hearing non-motion carries. Item D, request for abatement, case number two thousand thirteen dash double oh one sixty-seven, heirs of Juanita Hill, twelve oh one Old Jacksonville Highway, Palaca.
This is, uh, the request to abate this property. I'm gonna... This is the request to abate this property. I'm gonna show some pictures here. It's right across from Jenkins Middle School. It's being used by either students or street people. It's an attractive nuisance. The property was first seen actually April third, two thousand thirteen. But back when I was in code enforcement, even back in two thousand six, we had a case on this. So I don't know what happened to that case, but anyways, this one's going. The house is, I already said that. The special magistrate heard the case on June twentieth, two thousand thirteen, and found it to be in violation. He gave the owner until June twentieth, two thousand twelve, to bring the property into compliance or twenty-five dollar a day fine would commence. Hundred dollar administrative fee was also charged. Nothing has happened. The special magistrate on March twentieth, two thousand fourteen, ordered the lien to be recorded. The lien was recorded on March twentieth. The case went back before the special magistrate on December fifteenth, two thousand fourteen, and he ordered the property to be abated or foreclosed upon. And staff is requesting that the board concur with that.
We have a request for abatement, case number two thousand thirteen double oh one sixty-seven, heirs of Juanita Hill. Are there any representatives here? Property owner, agent, neighbors? Close public hearing, commissioners.
Mr. Salmon, on this house, it seems to be somewhat square. You can't help but to notice the nice hardwareed floors. Is there any way for this to be, or is it suitable to serve as a habitat?
It's got, it's got some flooring issues as far as it's soft. But I assume somebody other than the people that own it now, had control of it, they could probably rehabilitate it.
Okay. It just looks like it's habitable with some electric and a little bit of handiwork.
Right across from the middle school.
Yeah, yeah, I don't like that. I know it's a problem with the law enforcement. See by the photos what we're dealing with. Okay. With that being answered, I'll move approval of staff recommendation on it.
Second. Proper motion and a second.
Second.
The motion is second is for the recommended action to concur with the special magistrate and authorize staff to abate this property. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Item E is a fine reduction request, case number two thousand eleven double oh thirty-four. Anthony Fannin, one eleven Hillcrest Road, Satsuma. And also, there is a neighbor, Mac Chandler, that is an interested party. Yes, sir.
The scenario on this case was it was first seen on January twenty-eighth, two thousand eleven. There was significant care premises issue and also a problem with the electrical panel. Notice of violation hearing was sent out on May nineteenth, two thousand eleven. On May nineteenth, for, May nineteenth, two thousand eleven hearing back in January. The special magistrate heard the case on May nineteenth and found the property to be in violation. Gave him until June twentieth to bring the property into compliance or a twenty-five dollar day fine would commence. And there was also a hundred dollar administrative fee. The lien was recorded on August twenty-second, two thousand eleven. The property continued to deteriorate. On February twenty-sixth, two thousand thirteen, staff received notice of an upcoming tax deed sale on the property. Staff never heard the results of the tax deed sale. The property continued to decline. Staff sent out a notice for foreclosure and abatement hearing on December eighteen, two thousand fourteen. Special magistrate ordered the property to be foreclosed or abated. A neighbor down the road, Mr. Chandler, came into the office and explained that he was tired of this property because it's been a problem, property for as long as, for a long time. He's attempting to buy the property. He got, he became aware of the thirty-three thousand dollar code enforcement lien. And didn't want to proceed with the purchase and demolition of the property until he figured out if there was gonna be reduction on the fine. I told him that we typically, in those cases, do suggest a fine, but he wanted to have assurance. So we took him through, the property's not in compliance now. But he, he wanted to go through the fine reduction process so he would know what it would be. Staff took the case before the special magistrate on February nineteenth, two thousand fifteen. And special magistrate recommended the board of county commissioners accept a hundred dollars in lieu of the fine for the following reasons. Probable new owner will be resolving a longstanding neighborhood problem. He actually owns properties on both sides of this house. He will be spending his own money to bring the property into compliance and get control of the property. And he's taking a proactive role in resolving a neighborhood problem that has been there for some time.
The director has come.
And if I could add just a couple of things. Brian Hammond, Planning and Development Services Director. In general, we are standing up with folks who are helping us out like this because it keeps us from having to spend county money to clean up a problem. Obviously, what we're after is compliance. We have gotten that. Otherwise, we kind of spend a lot of time sitting around waiting for tax deeds to occur, trying not to spend our money. So by all means, we support anybody that's working with us.
Thank you so much for the, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to ask a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So this man has not purchased the property yet because he wants to be sure the fine is removed. I was just wondering if we could make it subject to him purchasing it. I mean, what if we remove the fine?
I think certainly you can do that.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Chandler is here to speak concerning the case. My concern piggybacks off of what Commissioner Harris is saying. We do not want to set a precedent there. And so when you say the probable new owner will be resolving there, I do understand the probable. And I also understand the potential new owner, but we do have to have a safety net in order to protect both sides.
Understood. The, the action doesn't actually occur until you have actually signed off on the release of lien. So nothing has occurred until you do that.
Yeah, if his attempt to purchase it falls through, then this basically becomes null and void.
Okay. Commissioner Harvey.
Mr. Chairman, thank you so much. Mr. Hammond, a question for you. We've talked about this in the past. Just so the public knows, what is our hard cost in this thirty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollar fine? Because it's really just a paper fine. It's not actual money that we'll ever see coming back from that. But what is our hard cost in that, in that number?
And I believe it's on the back of your. Yes, on this one, it's nine hundred thirty-six dollars, according to the figures that we've given you. Certainly, as these fines rack up, at some point in time, the fines far exceed the actual underlying value of the property. Therefore, it's just mythical at that point. Whether it goes for taxes, whether, no matter what happens, you're not gonna get that money out of it. It does keep a lot of people from actually bidding on tax deeds because if they know, or if they're savvy in those, in dealing with tax deeds. They understand that our liens pass through. They survive the sale. And it will keep them from dealing with it. And we certainly don't want to be the impediment that keeps them from working with us and cleaning these things up.
Well, I'm very happy that we're gonna be able to retrofit this building, put it back on the tax roll, clean up the neighborhood. I think it's a wonderful idea.
Absolutely, and we're behind the public a hundred percent.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for being here with us and thank you for being a good neighbor, who have endured some adverse situations.
This piece of property we're talking about, I moved across, across the road, I remarried and moved, lived across the road from, there's three pieces of property, really. And in two thousand twelve, the two pieces of property next to me, they were drug addict properties. And they've become the people that we knew owned these piece of property. And they begged me to buy the properties from them, just to get out from under it. So I went ahead and did that. And this piece of property, at that time, this is back in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. The piece of property across the road, at that time, I tried to inquire about it, buying it too. I went ahead and bought these two pieces of property next to me to keep the drug addicts out, really, is what I did. And I fixed them up. I probably spent fifty thousand dollars on these two pieces of property. And I'm renting them out. I'll never get my money out of it. At least my neighborhood is, you know, it's free. That's why I did that. And at that time, I quirked about this piece of property. Mr. Finney owned it at that time. And so when this all came about lately, I went ahead and had a title search on this piece of property. The piece of property has been in foreclosure and it's into a lawyer down in Miami. Now Lloyd Falk, the guy that owned it, has died and it's in his estate. Well, I called them Friday and told them I was gonna meet with y'all. I offered them three thousand dollars for this piece of property. And I would pay the back taxes on this piece of property and clean it up. So I figured I'll have ten thousand dollars on two lots, which is basically worth it. It would give me, clean up the property and my piece of, two pieces of property, I don't, everything in between them. Basically, it's what I'm doing. Only thing that I would say, you know, so by my best estimate, if you even reduce this to three, to a hundred dollars like this fine. I'm gonna have ten thousand dollars in these two lots when I figure time I get it cleaned up. The only thing that I can see that maybe that can get some help on is, I noticed the tax deeds on these. I paid the back taxes. Well, in two thousand twelve, the taxes was seven hundred. Seven hundred and, and thirty-eight dollars. And then in two thousand twelve, the taxes went to a hundred and seventy dollars. I'm assuming that they took this building or whatever it was off of it for that two thousand twelve. There's a five hundred dollar difference in the taxes from two thousand twelve to two thousand thirteen. You see what I'm saying?
Yes, sir. I'm thinking that that may be a question for the property appraiser.
So I can go to them and decide it.
If you can give Mr. Parker your information before you leave, the property appraiser just so happened he's still here.
And there's another thing that I said, my, the two thousand, the taxes on it now, they pay into four hundred dollars garbage pickup that went on the tax bills. That's on this year's. So I'd have to work with them on the, I think it has to come back for y'all to be approved of it, don't it?
I'm not sure I follow you.
The, any, like the tax bill for this year?
Yes, sir.
They added the four hundred dollars for garbage pickup on to the tax. So it's, it's back to seven hundred dollars.
Yeah, well, that's, that's not, that's not an assessment for pickup.
Well, it was for the garbage pickup on this piece of property. In other words, if you have a, he said if there's a, if there's a dwelling, if there's a, if there's any kind of dwelling on a piece of property, when you get your tax. That, that four hundred dollars for, for garbage pickup, which is your landfill, is on that tax roll. But there was no, but that, this piece of property was, you see what I'm saying, I'm trying to say? And if, it's not, it's just something that saved me eight hundred dollars to clean it up. If those two was reduced to the regular yearly tax bill of a hundred and seventy dollars.
I think what he's asking, if I understand him correctly, is there was not a dwelling on there that generated trash?
Well, and you can see it, it's fell down. But yet, that four hundred dollars, I thought I inquired about that, why it went up. The seventh, the first year, it was seven hundred and something, and then, well, I got it right here. And then it went down the next year to a hundred and seventy. That was in two thousand twelve.
Let's allow the property appraiser to do an analysis of the statement there and then he'll touch bases with the administrator and the director of planning.
Now, I'm interested only if I can work with this lawyer in this state to give me a clear title to this piece of property. And if he can't, I, I'll, I'll get back with you. And if he doesn't do it in this month, you're gonna have, I don't know if you go into foreclosure or what on that part of it. But to get it, I'm interested in it if I can get a clear title on it.
Okay, that, that was the concern again that Commissioner Harris brought up there because obviously, we applaud you for stepping up to the plate in the first place. And we just want to make sure that all of the stars align, so to speak, and that everything is in order. So if you'll keep them informed, but I want to consult with counsel to make sure that the action we take today is a safety net so that everybody wins. We want.
And I would like to that.
That's the way we've done it.
And I'd like for that fine to reduce to the hundred dollars because I can't add thirty-three thousand dollars on this piece of property.
That's the recommendation that's before, so that part is, is in there. So is, are there, is there a need to put any exceptions in the motion?
Thank you.
There's no need. What if he doesn't buy it and then we remove the fines?
Well, that's the practice, John. Correct me if I'm wrong, they are approving this reduction condition on him buying.
Right.
And we will not sign a release until the time.
So the release, the release will not come for the chairman's signature until such time that there has been a change of ownership.
Correct.
But then even when there's a change of ownership, how much time is allotted for compliance?
Sixty days is fine.
Sixty days is fine.
Okay, well, as long as, again, the record reflects the change of ownership and then the sixty days of bringing it into compliance. If that's understood, once it is changed in ownership, then certainly that would clear up our concerns.
Mr. Chairman, one more thing. It says that the hundred dollars would be paid within thirty days. Well, it seems in this case, this won't be satisfied in thirty days.
It would be thirty days from, well, sixty days now from closing, him getting control of the property.
From closing?
Yeah, so in other words, it'd be a modified action than what we have. Thank you, Commissioner, for raising that issue. So the recommendation of the special magistrate to accept the one hundred dollars in the case, but the sixty day time limit based on change of ownership and compliance.
Does that really cover, subject to the purchaser purchasing it?
Right. Because ownership is gonna trigger the sixty days.
All right. I make a motion that we accept the recommendation with the understanding that it is subject to the purchaser following through with the purchase.
Okay, we have a proper motion on the floor.
Second.
Proper second. Further discussion? Case number two thousand eleven double oh thirty-four. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Eighty, a fine reduction request, case number two thousand twelve double oh five thirty-four, Christie Collins, forty twenty-six, Silver Lake Drive, Palatka.
This property was first seen on September fifth, two thousand twelve, and appeared that the property was abandoned and extremely overgrown. Notice of violation was sent out on September twelfth, sixth, two thousand twelve. Staff found an email address for Safeguard Properties, who were the owners at the time. And made contact with them. They're representing, indicated they would bring the yard into compliance. New mortgage company was assigned the property and Safeguard was out of the picture. Staff contacted City Financial, was told that they would also bring, put in an order to clean the property. Nothing really happened. This notice of violation hearing was sent out on March sixth, two thousand thirteen. On April eighteenth, two thousand thirteen, the special magistrate heard the case and found the property to be in violation. And gave the owner until May eighteenth, two thousand thirteen to comply. A hundred dollar administrative fee was also charged. Nothing happened. The case went back to the special magistrate on July eighteenth. And the special magistrate ordered the lien to be recorded. And the property went to a tax deed sale. It was purchased by Simon Otwell, Otwell. Who called and indicated he had mowed the property in May eighth, two thousand fourteen. On December thirteenth, two thousand fourteen, we received information that Christie Lynn Collins had purchased the property. Her letter, which is attached to the packet, states that she purchased on May twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen, and has paid over ten thousand dollars to bring the house up to standards and the property. And she requested a fine reduction hearing on February nineteenth, two thousand fifteen. The fine reduction issue was brought before the special magistrate. He recommended that the board of county commissioners reduce the seventy-four hundred dollar fine plus a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars, if it's paid within sixty days of B O C C action. Basically, the new owner cleaned up the property and upgraded the home without knowing that there was a code enforcement case. And she said she spent ten thousand dollars to do that. She is present and I think she would like to discuss the last hundred dollars with you.
Okay, thank you very kindly. If you'll state your name and address for the record.
Good morning. My name's Christie Collins. I live at one oh three Park Circle, formerly known as four zero two six Silver Lake Drive. I purchased the home last year, May two thousand fourteen. I, I spent time in the, in different offices concerning this property. The planning and zoning was not one of them. But no one told me about any fines against the property or fees or. Um, but, um, no one told me about any fines against the property or fees or anything. Um, and I did have a meeting with the special magistrate and they did reduce the fun, I mean, the, um, fine to the hundred dollars administrative fee. But I just feel like, um, it wasn't, the day that I bought the property, I cleaned it up. I started immediately. Um, I just don't feel like that hundred dollar fine should be mine. Like I say, no one, I, I had no way of knowing that there was anything against it, you know, when I, when I signed the, the deed, there, no one told me anything. Um, eight months later is when I found out. Um, the last paper I got, it showed, um, I think it was ninety-six hun- ninety-six hundred dollars fine. Um, and that's for not cleaning up the yard from the prior, um, owner. So I'm just asking, you know, that, um, I'm not held responsible for any of the fines. I, I, I have pictures, I've sent pictures to the planning and zoning of, um, the yard, the, the crepe myrtles, all that's been cleaned up. So, that's basically where I stand.
Do you have something to add, sir?
Uh, yes, sir.
State your name for the record, please. State your name for the record.
My name's Christie.
Wendell Ray, this is Christie Collins. She's my daughter. The question that I have is, um, why do you bill someone taxes, fees, fines, when it's actually the previous owner that's the responsible one?
Fine is attached to the property, and whoever the owner is, it goes with the property, uh, you know, regardless. And that's why we obviously have to do title searches and have title insurance and to, you know, to make sure that those things are, you know, are in its, in its appropriate place are there, and then that is also the reason that the special magistrate, uh, are pretty much eliminated the fine. So this is not necessarily a fine, it's an administrative fee.
Well, during, during the last meeting that we had here, uh, almost everyone agreed that she shouldn't have to pay any fine. But the special magistrate had, you know, he, he put the hundred dollars on it, which is.
And that, and that's not the fine. The fine is waived, that's admin- an administrative fee, uh, there, but we'll go into commissioner deliberations.
I had a question if I could, Mr. Chairman. Did you purchase your title insurance when you bought this property? It couldn't, it would reveal the outstanding.
Well, I went to a place right next to the courthouse, um, and signed the title there. He signed it over, I signed my thing and.
But you didn't take out the insurance?
But no, I had no.
It would've revealed.
It was my first time, I've never, I did not know.
But as the chairman said, that the fines were reduced by the special magistrate, and you're dealing with a fee at this point.
Yeah.
Actually, if I may, we are the ones that make the final decision on reducing the fine. It's a recommendation by the special magistrate.
Right, I understand.
But just word to the wise one, ever you purchase a property, you should have the title searched, get title insurance. There could be a lot worse things on it than this.
I've learned my lesson.
Okay.
I think our question is, you know, I know, I understand you're saying that the fines and fees and everything comes with the new owner, but why don't you go after the old owner? They're the real.
Tied to the property.
Right, I understand that, but it just doesn't seem right that, that the previous owner, you know.
Or there should be some kind of thing that, when you buy a piece of property, there should be some kind of red flag.
It is.
To let you know, hey, you know, there's, there's fines and things against this place. Had I known, I probably wouldn't have purchased the place.
Well, again, sometimes when you're dealing with a real estate agent or a broker, you know, or any of those individuals, uh, they're in even a title company, uh, these are the kind of things that are there for checking balance to make sure that this kind of thing does not occur. Uh, however, when you look at it from the perspective, although the fine was tied to the property too, I think we have to be mindful of the fact that since the fine really could stay in place. And so, I think grace has certainly been, uh, uh, extended, uh, there, and it has to be a teachable moment for all concerned. And, and so, don't look at it as a penalty, look at it as, 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 as a fee that is administratively, uh, there. And if you look at it as a penalty, actually, the penalty is the other number.
Yes.
The seventy-four hundred, that's the penalty. So I, I, I think that, you know, you could easily cause us to set a precedent, uh, there for future cases, uh, there. And that would be our reluctance to, uh, to even consider, uh, taking the administrative fee and treating it like it's a fine. We're not treating it like it's a fine. It's nothing that's quote in your record that makes it appear that you did not do anything but due diligence. And we applaud you just as we applauded the other gentleman for, for stepping up there. So it, it's, it's not a fine, it is definitely an administrative fee.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
John, was our lien of record when she purchased the property? So you would have, you would probably have a claim against the seller of the property for failing to disclose that to you. But it would've shown up in a title search as people sell.
You, you just got a hundred dollars worth of free legal advice.
And I'd like to point out on our page, and I'd be glad to give you this, um, our agency here has incurred seven hundred and sixty-three dollars in administrative costs.
That's right.
With personnel following this property, not the old owner or you, but going out and trying to get it conformed, so it's not such an eyesore in our community. Nobody's picking here, but, um, to reduce to seven sixty-three, further in the administrative side down to a hundred dollars, the special magistrate was being very, very gracious.
Yes, he was.
Yes, ma'am. And you're, you're welcome to have this if you'd like.
Mr. Chairman?
I'll give you the whole case, how about that?
Commissioner Harvey.
Yes, and it, it has a breakdown of everything in there. Yep.
Ms. Collins, I see that in your letter that you're a single grandmother with custody of your seven-year-old grandson.
Yes, sir.
And you're working only part-time, uh, understanding that a hundred dollars is a lot of money to a, a lot of people right now in this economy. If we did go with that, uh, we're gonna give you sixty days to do that, would that be acceptable enough to pay that?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to ask that question. Thank you.
Not that her dad won't shorten the days.
I like the shirt, too.
Do I have a motion down there, Mr. Oh, I'm not.
Do I have, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd love to make a motion. On case number two thousand twelve zero zero five three four, I move approval under staff recommendations.
Okay, we have a proper motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Hearing none.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all so much. Thank you for, for doing what you've done.
God bless.
I'm sorry, I forgot. I was in a time warp.
Inside story. Okay, item G, fine reduction request, case number two thousand fourteen, that's triple oh four, Carlin Welch, one fifty-eight, to want a trail mail rose. Mr. Salmons.
Uh, this property was first seen on January third, two thousand fourteen, and mobile home was, uh, brought onto the site to basically just sit there without any permits or, uh, approval of moving it. Uh, the issue had cases open before without success, uh, before we started this one. Uh, those cases were closed and we started this one. A notion of violation in the hearing was sent out on January ninth, two thousand fourteen. The owner called on March thirteenth, two thousand fourteen, and staff directed her to our list of demolition contractors. On March twentieth, two thousand fourteen, the special magistrate ruled that the property was in violation and gave the owner until May nineteenth, two thousand fourteen, and coming to compliance on a twenty-five dollar date. Fine would commence, a hundred dollar administrative fee was also charged. On April eleventh, two thousand fourteen, contractor pulled the demolition permit. Uh, the recheck on May twentieth, two thousand fourteen, showed that the mobile home had been demolished, but a lot of debris had been left on site. Uh, staff waited a few days to see if the property would be brought into compliance, but it did not. Uh, the special magistrate ordered the fine be recorded as a lien against the property on October sixteen, two thousand fourteen. Ms. Welch, uh, discussed the case with staff and indicated that her ex-husband had put the mo- mobile home on the property without her knowledge. And, uh, she also mistakenly thought her contractor completed the job, so she, uh, in the allotted time, so she didn't think she was, uh, in violation anymore. Uh, she asked if she could have a fine reduction hearing on the case. Uh, the fine reduction hearing went, was held on February ninth, two thousand fifteen. Special magistrate recommended that the board accept two hundred dollars in this case, if it's paid within forty-five days of board action. Uh, rationale for his recommendation was the ex-husband brought the mobile home on the property without her knowledge. And the owner obtained a permit, uh, in good, uh, uh, hopes that, uh, the mobile home would actually be down within the timeframe given by the special magistrate, but the contractor she hired did not do the, the job.
Mr. Salmons, is the property currently in compliance?
Yes.
Okay, that would be number three for me because it's like, you know what? All right, uh, is anyone here representing, uh, this case, two thousand fourteen, triple oh four?
She lives in Miami, and I told her that if you guys were gonna divert from this, that I would ask you to continue it so that she could actually come, but it's a long way to drive for.
Absolutely.
Actually, about a two hour, a two hour.
Give good advice, sir.
Yes.
Is, what is the pleasure of the board as it relates to the recommended action?
So move approval of, uh, recommended action by the, uh, ma- special magistrate.
A proper motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Hearing none, motion carries. Anything else, sir?
Nope, you're through seeing me today.
All right. Okay, don't sound so happy about that. All right, uh, Mr. Leary, you're next.
Thanks, sir. Have two appointments to be made to the Green Belt Advisory Board. I believe Mr. Parker has, uh, submitted some recommendations, some names and recommendation for your consideration. They're not contained in the agenda. You may have already received those. If not, I can remind you of who those names are.
Okay, for the Green Belt Advisory Board, two appointments to fill unexpired terms ending June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, District One, Coward, District Five, Alford. Do this district commissioners have any commentary?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate John Newbold to serve as the replacement for Mr. Coward, who's served for many years.
Okay, John Newbold, District One, District Five?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mike Barrickin. I've called him and he's graciously accepted.
Okay, we have two, uh, recommended appointees. Is there a motion to approve the two for the Green Belt?
One more correction. There is, there are two John Newbolds. This is John Newbold, the third J R.
Third. John Newb- John J R. Newbold the third. Okay, wanna make sure we got the right, right one.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd also like to say Danny Tilton had contacted me about these appointments. He's with the Cattlemen's Association and feels very comfortable that these two individuals will represent, uh, the Green Belt in a proper manner that it needs to happen. So I make a motion that we accept the two, uh, individuals that have been, uh, proposed.
Mr. Chairman? I think Mr. Parker.
Mr. Parker, please come forward.
I'm sorry.
I apologize for the confusion. It was senior, uh, the second, or junior, that accepted that position.
It's J R., right?
The dad.
Oh, it's the dad?
About the son, yeah.
John.
Oh.
Oh, okay, I thought that my.
J R.
The third from the record and put junior.
Okay.
Junior, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you very kindly. We know there's competency on both levels, so that's good news.
Okay, we have a motion.
Motion.
Yes, I'll clean that motion up. Yes, sir, I, I agree.
Motion covers John Newbold Junior and Mike Barrickin. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Proper second. Further discussion? Those in favor for the appointment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Hearing none? Motion carries. What else, Mr. Leary?
Nothing further, sir, thank you.
Mr. Russ Cassavere, county attorney.
Nothing today, sir.
That's your final answer?
Yes, sir.
Clerk of court, welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At a prior meeting, there was some discussion about the Better Place Plan expenditures. Uh, and so I've, uh, went back and had a discussion with John Jones, our finance director, and I asked him, um, what the possibility to, uh, would be to create a, um, Excel spreadsheet of prior year expenditures by the projects. And so he's put that together. Uh, it's in a format that, um, someone knows how to work Excel, can, uh, reformat it. So if you just wanna pull up a contractor name, you would see all of the expenditures by that contractor. If you, um, uh, had a name that you wanted to look for, or just a year, or a project, you could do it that way. And so, um, I, um, had that reviewed by administration and to make sure that the, the, uh, descriptive words that we used were, uh, correct, and they've done that. And so, uh, we wanted to offer that, uh, and to be able to place that on the website so that, uh, folks at home could do, uh, their own research. Um, we're gonna continue to try to expand that spreadsheet so that it has more and more information. But that was about a, uh, a three-day work effort, uh, for a couple of individuals to pull that together because we had not, uh, created that spreadsheet and kept those, um, figures in that format before. We have them, but they're just in individual, um, files, they're in an individual accounts and, and, but we wanted to try to compile that. So just like you had with your list prior, uh, where you were able to show the roads, this shows all the expenditures. And so we're gonna be, uh, with your blessing, we'd like to post that, uh, on the website. So it's just one more layer of information folks can do their research at home or their business on what has been expended. And these are just expenditures that we have paid, um, a bill for. So, uh, but it's important to know that it doesn't tell the whole story because, like in the case of the, uh, welcome sign out at the, uh, Triangle Park, uh, that was built, that was a collaboration of, uh, G P and several government entities. And what we show was what the county's part was. So you have to know that there is a little more research to really see the impact of some of these projects. But, uh, with your blessing, we'd like to, uh, post that on the website.
Entertaining motion that we bless the clerk.
Thank you. Uh, I wanted to also bless him and thanking. Thank you very much for that. Just on your own, that just shows what kind of clerk you are. We really appreciate your, your help. And, um, I just wanted to know what website will you put it on and how will people go to it?
Yeah, we'll work with I T. to make sure that it's easily identifiable.
It'll be on the commissioner's website, okay?
And clerk website.
On both, okay.
Wherever you look, you'll be able to see it.
Thank you. With that, I'll be glad to make a motion that we do that.
And I'd like to comment to thank John and your staff and Tim Corshue, and, and, um, we've had a request a little while ago for that same set of figures. Much needed, thank you.
Again, your initiative and your, and your leadership, uh, in this effort. And, and, and everyone need to know that we're, we're not out campaigning, uh, for this. I know there are some individuals who are campaigning, um, against this. And all I ask all of our citizens to do is do their homework. And we wanna make sure that we provide, just as the clerk has mentioned, or provide every tool that you need to make a conscious choice and a conscious decision uh, as it relates, uh, there. And if we will look at the Better Place Plan projects and expenditures as well as the income and separate that from how you feel about a specific commissioner or about administrative staff or, or any department, then I believe that we will all come up with the same conclusion, uh, there. And so, um, thank you again. Uh, this, this is, this is phenomenal. And, um, my request, uh, for all of us, is that even for the rest of the, the current term of Better Place Plan, is that we continue to provide, uh, to the clerk, uh, uh, the support that is needed to, uh, to, to share this information because it's, it's not like it's private or it's hidden, it just was not put, uh, you know, in, in the, um, on, on the website and, and accessible to individuals without them having to launch their own, um, uh, analysis and investigation. So thank you from the bottom of our heart. Motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, yeah, this is, this is, this is great, and, and I'm sure this, this will not only answer a lot of questions, uh, this will settle a lot of, of, of issues, uh, as it relates to, uh, individuals that, that have opinions as to what has been done and, and what hasn't been done. So thanks again for that. Uh, District One, any, any closing comments?
No.
District Two?
A great weekend, Zaya Festival, mayor's reception was a, a success, uh, in my opinion, the best one we ever had. And, uh, well attended. Uh, it's a busy month, as we know, mad, Mar- March Madness, March of Dimes, the fairs coming up and many, many things. We have a fishing tournament, Mr. Pelcer, I'll let you comment on that.
Um, that's the Crescent City, um, High School Welding Department. They're trying to have a fundraiser, uh, be at the waterfront Saturday, I think, a weigh-in at three. You haven't told me your schedule, you gonna be able to help me that morning?
Talk about that later.
Oh, Lordy. Uh, that afternoon, or that morning to afternoon, I will be in Inalakan myself, cooking ribs for the Inalakan High School softball team. So, busy for me this weekend, but, um, is it my turn to say?
Well, since you on, uh, you kind of had a second. Well, since you on, uh, you kind of had a segue, so you're fine, I'm sure Mr. Harvey will.
You get to go next slide, I'm just... This Better Place Plan, you know, I hear so many naysayers say about it. I, I invite you to pick it apart. Pick it apart. I mean, it's, it's here, it's, it's been, uh, audited, where the money's gone. Numbers don't lie. They do not lie, you know, so...
And make your decision after you pick it apart.
That's right, that's right, but give it fair benefit of the doubt until then, you know? Uh, like I said, no, no grievance was, Mr. Flag said, with any particular commissioner that is here or was here, but, but, uh, it, it'll be a sad day in Putnam County without this.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Harvey, sir?
Um, yes, the Isaiah Festival, my job was to put the parade together, and most of y'all were there. It was a very well-attended parade, and, uh, things went off very well, and, um, just happy to be able to serve Putnam County in, in the position I am. I did attend the dredging, uh, project meeting last night in, at, in Duval County, and, um, just sat back and listened to a lot of the, uh, comments that were made, and didn't make a comment at all, but I just wanted, uh, everybody to know that I was in the room, and there was about probably five of us citizens from Putnam County in attendance last night.
So, uh, comments on Boy Scout?
Oh, yes.
Weekend.
Yeah, I went out to the Boy Scout ran, uh, complex and, uh, was invited to, we were all invited to the groundbreaking, but as we, every, as Commissioner Flag always says, we can't be in two places at one time, and it's a big county, and since the Boy Scout area was in my district, I showed up and was able to do the groundbreaking out there, and, and I tell you what, uh, you talk about a bunch of deserving projects and people that are really trying to work with the neighbors, there was probably about fifteen neighbors in attendance, and, uh, we're very excited about all the changes that are happening at the Boy Scout Ranch, so thank you.
It's, it's really commendable, and I think that also this week, uh, Thursday, they have the, um, Boy Scouts, um, dinner. Uh, clerk, can you shed some light on that, please?
Yes, sir, that's, uh, this Thursday night at, uh, six-thirty at the Ravine Gardens. Uh, individuals have been invited to attend, and it is a fundraiser for the Boy Scout Dinner, and it's their annual American Leadership Dinner, and they're going to honor, uh, this year's recipient of their outstanding, uh, mer- meritorious award to Mr. Dan Martinez for his years of service to Boy Scouts.
Yes, and it's certainly, um, a very commendable occurrence and, and very outstanding, um, leadership, um, over the years from our community. A commissioner's just something for us to be mindful of, uh, it's not, uh, we don't have, uh, a hunting dog in this hunt, but the information concerning the issue with the fair authority and the festival committee, I'm hoping that we can encourage them to,